May 25th, 2021 regular planning board meeting. Consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the link provided. If you do not have a camera or a microphone on your computer, you may use the following dialing number that's provided with meeting ID. Please only use dial in or computer, not both as feedback will distort the meeting. The meeting audio and video will be recorded. I also ask someone else here now, but that if you do participate that you put your name in your correct name in and we'd prefer that if you're going to speak that you use video if you were before us, we wouldn't let you stand up in the hallway. So that's just something I ask. All right, so we got that going. First item or item two is approval of minutes from May 11th, 2021. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes, can I make one addition? My my vote to adjourn, I got cut off. So just if we can add me back in.
It's on there now, Theo.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so um, do we hear a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Theo has made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote, Theo?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
And myself, Matthew? Yes. All right. Item three, board discussion, review of current zoning issues around the lake. So Bill, you want to handle that? You've been working on that?
Sure. Well, as I distributed to the board, the meeting minutes, I just thought it would be easier to continue with what I had started. So if you don't mind, share, I'd like to share my screen.
Yep, you can do that.
Yep. So you should be able to see the word document in front of you. This is the same word document that we've been using with just added information at the top. So thinking about protecting the lake, and I hope all the board members had a chance to review this. It's as as I got deeper into reviewing other overlay districts and looking at the wording and trying to understand more about how it could be and what it needs to accomplish. I think as spoken by a few of the in the last meeting, we need to focus, maybe focus just on the zoning, get rid of the whole views and vistas, safety and pollution. It's other boards, it does cover that and a lot of that could fall into more of a master plan. So that that's something that we can leave off, my suggestion. Focus would be on the options below and thinking about how this could work. And I know we've talked about these in the past, but I think tonight we need to make a decision. Meaning, is it a lake overlay district? And if it is, do we define the area by properties? Or define it by watershed? And that came up, Ms. Delvoe brought that up in the last, and I thought that was interesting and I looked to see if I could find exactly what that would be. Crystal Lake, Mill River, Saugus River, a few other wetlands that are connected to that. Reading Meadow, there's a lot of the watershed. So where it runs to, there was a couple of other places too. So I couldn't find a great map of that. And before I do any more research on that, I just wanted to see as a board if if we're going to define by watershed versus properties. I feel we should really just focus on a lake overlay district where it's public access and that we can work within that. Item two, map zoning rezone. Business district across adjacent to Vets Field, meaning North Ave from Yale to Church, Prospect Street from North to Elm. And we would list those properties. I think this becomes a little bit more defined. And then the business and limited districts on North Ave from Willard Road North. So that would be kind of like across from the Knights of Columbus and north from there. And then the other one was form based zoning, which I think we could put aside and think about that for a master plan. So going through those three options, I really see one and two as viable options. And as a board, I think we should really figure out tonight and not leave this meeting until we have a direction for either a lake overlay or a map rezoning. I don't think it would be a mix of, I think it would be one or the other. And we could really do either one. I don't see a big advantage of one over the other. I am leaning more towards the Lake Overlay District and defining the area by properties more than the map rezoning. But I'd love to discuss that. Before we do get into that, the wording from section 190-94, mixed use development is really close to how the Lake Overlay District might be, and Theo might have some to add to this. I really like that the planning board is named as the Special Permitting Granting Authority. And that link is live to go to that. We don't have to do that now. I also think we should look at the table one. This is the table that has, you know, it's, is there a special permit? No, there's no special permit allowed. But there are a couple of items underneath there, like sidewalk cafes and a few others like mixed use that maybe we want to change from N to special permit, which would come to us as the Special Permit Granting Authority. Timeline. So we discussed this and Matt asked, what would that timeline be? So me and my graphic side, trying to figure out like what that timeline is. And I won't like, I was like, I could just take a picture of this and send it, but then you'd have to decipher all the lines and everything else. So thinking of the town meeting warrant. So last year I went through the emails on the planning board that came in through the planning board from the website. And October 8th was that deadline for town council to receive articles. That would be an S on the end article. So if we're shooting for that, our last meeting to issue would be September 28th. So that's all based on last year, but it seems pretty consistent. So we could, I don't know if Erin, if you did get any information from Sherry to confirm when that would be.
No, I did not.
Okay.
They don't know.
Yeah.
Until probably the end of summer.
Right. I know, still figuring out the town meeting we just had. So the public hearing side of it. June 22nd is a good internal deadline to complete the writing for the ad. So as Matt suggested at the last meeting, we should have the writing just like write down for that article. Like, what is it? And that becomes the ad. Planning Board is opening public hearings to discuss zoning article for town meeting in the fall, please, you know, and then it gets into what the writing is. If we work towards the June 22nd, so we have, after tonight, we have two meetings to get that all together, working with Tom Mullen, working with our brains to figure out like, what do we want it to say? And public comment to help us focus. And you could see in there, public comments, the ad will need to be posted by Monday, June 28th. That would leave 14 days before our meeting in July. So our meeting in July would be July 13th, July 27th, August would be July, I'm sorry, August 10th, August 24th. And then we would have September 14th. I know we're not going to meet all those days because of vacations and all, so we should consider. I think we have plenty to have the two or three hearings in that time. The posted the public hearing post, that's under the guidelines of section 190-68. We would, it would be in the local paper. So in the item, that would be on Monday, June 28th, and then it would have to post again the following week. So it would post twice. And then we don't have to advertise anymore. But when I look through the public hearing section, it also requires a butters to be notified. So this could be the tricky part. And Erin, we might need some help to identify the butters. And this is where we would talk also to Tom Mullen to make sure are we biting into something too big? How does this get publicized? And obviously something goes up in town hall on the Bolton Board as a notice.
Bill, I don't think the butters don't get notified for this.
Well, I know. And here it is right here, parties and interest. As used in this chapter shall mean the petitioner, a butters owners of land directly opposite or any public or private street or way of land within 300 feet of the property line. Is that just specific for the subdivisions we do?
Yes, that that would be for ZBA issues, subdivisions, things like that, where actual notice is required for zoning changes. You just do a general posting. Which has been one of the issues that people haven't really liked too much is that someone's someone's lot can be rezoned and you don't really have to notify them explicitly. So.
Okay, that's great news. And I think I do trust you, Matt, but I think we should just get a confirmation as well from Mr. Mullen on to make sure who by law should be notified. If the advertisement and posting in town hall is all we need, that's great. One thing I did learn from town council meeting last night. And we should discuss this of items not anticipated. I don't know if anybody tuned in, but at like the two hour or something 20 mark, it was, if you want to look at it, it was the yeah, I'll have to get, I think it was like, yeah, two hour 30 mark. June 15th. From June 15th on, our board would need to meet in person at town hall from that point unless town council. And I don't have my notes in front of me, but unless town council approves a delay and we can stay on Zoom or on remote.
Bill, there was some new legislative that came out today saying that they're expanding until like November, I think.
Oh, okay.
To figure it out.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know about that. It didn't keep me awake last night, but I'm like, how are we going to do this?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know all the logistics yet. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Erin.
You're welcome.
The rest is the information that we've already reviewed with the maps and everything. So I'm not going to go through all that again. Any comments or questions or places we should start?
Well, I guess the thing where you should start is what what zoning change are we looking at doing? What amendment revision are we looking to do?
Good question. So maybe it's good for Theo to chime in at this point to, he did a little digging as well.
Yeah, I am, I'm, I'm really getting to the the concept of the overlay district. And I think it's a little bit of a mashup of defining. I think defining by properties is the easiest way to go. And the two concepts that are capturing my attention are, I read some zoning overlays kind of around scenic quality and vistas and things like that. And I know we've talked a little bit about vistas, but the way those were written was the scenic quality was subjective, but it allowed you to kind of define a geographic area. So I think that's why defining areas by properties makes sense. But it may also help us perhaps limit it a little bit. Because when we talk about scenic quality, we're, and this is what we've talked about before. It's, you know, looking in from North Avenue or looking out from the lake north, you know, southeast or west, right? And in in either case, you what you're looking at is appreciating sort of the the open space of the lake. But then it's what buildings surround. And then so, you know, if if the lake were ringed by buildings at the foot of North Ave, all the way around to Main Street, you know, in that circle, that would really mar the scenic quality. And and in the same way that if you had buildings immediately at the edge of the lake, ringing the lake, that would also mar the scenic quality. So I think that's why you could almost limit it to sort of the street boundary would would might might help us minimize the scope. But again, the concept, you know, that that's not to necessarily define the geographic area, but that that lets, excuse me, that that gets to sort of those immediate lots. And then it is about leading us to what is the purpose of the zoning overlay? It's is to encourage future redevelopment of these lots so that you get future buildings and uses that are considerate of public access and public views into and out of the lake. So that that then gets to, I think, the central crux of what we're trying to do really is what future buildings and how tall and where might they be located on the existing lots of Lakeside Office Park and, you know, of around the lake. So that's I, and then I think that allows us to get into the specifics of how far back you would allow some buildings. I'm focused on Lakeside Office Park. So that they they respect people looking in and people looking out and pedestrian access sort of at the edge of the lake to enjoy the lake. And so that that's what I've got. And I think I think that that leads to we've got some precedent. We know there's a lot of single family residential that abuts the lake. So that has a height limit of 35, and that has some open space requirements, which the the business districts don't. I mean, the business district has, you know, the 60 foot and the a much smaller lot coverage. And if you're thinking about future uses, you'd want to be encouraging perhaps some scaled back of buildings from the lake and also from North Ave so that North Ave would also be somewhat pedestrian friendly. And again, it's where my buildings be located to allow some sightlines. And but you could encourage some scale like scaled back of a building. So, you know, maybe like, you know, 50 feet from the lake edge, you'd allow some development and, you know, and that could be 35. And then as you get a little bit closer to North Ave, you could scale up a little bit higher. Because you're forming some sort of a I think, an acknowledgement of the existing zoning there and 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 that some non-residential uses might need slightly higher building heights. But then, then again, you're not going to let that just increase incrementally all the way to the North Ave edge, because then you have a very unfriendly building edge right against pedestrians walking along North Ave. So I think I think the two could work together and, you know, and again, you get something of a triangle, right? From North Ave to a certain point and then descending down to another certain point closer to the lake. And with base goals of the Conservation Commission, which, you know, if you look at at the the open space plan, it's to encourage a growing green belt around Lake Quanapawet. And again, we, the Environmental Sustainability Group and the like, you'd want to encourage more pervious surface at Lakeside Office Park. Because that's also, I think, certainly environmentally conscious and it respects the lake, but it's also makes for a more, again, pedestrian friendly uses. So I think, I think that way you're using these concepts to get to zoning specifics around building heights and setbacks and and then, and, you know, and mandating some pervious services or things, encouraging pervious services. So that's, I think, where where we could get to.
Good thing. So you're thinking to pick a street as a as a boundary, basically?
I I really think you could. I I know, like, as I think about it, I get a little tripped up about, you know, you're sort of overlaying, but yet you're saying the single families is pretty good. So you're not really trying to disturb that zoning, but you're trying to prevent you know, or you're trying to, you know, prevent future variances that would permit, you know, a higher building in in those areas as well as using the overlay to encourage future uses in the business or the neighborhood business that are more respectful of the lake and of, you know, Vision 2030, future master plan and some of those goals.
Does that? I was gonna say, if you took like North Ave as as the boundary, the only parcels you would be basically including are Lakeside Office Park. And then would you use Quanapawet Parkway as a boundary or 128? How would you?
Yeah, I think I think you would want, you would want to try to draw the circle. And I know that gets, you know, that adds some complication to right, other, you know, uses that are currently being developed there. But yeah, I think you would extend Quanapawet Parkway over to North Ave and and swing around.
So, okay, because. Share the zoning map?
Yeah, you can do that. What, you know, with that, the we're only including a few parcels on in here if we do that. Because everything along Main Street's single family or there's town owned property.
Right.
Butting lake. So what you have left is basically just the Lakeside Office Park there for the most part.
Right.
And
I'm sorry, go ahead, Matt.
As it is, I mean, they already have a height limit of 50 feet anyways. So we'd only be, you know, taking that down, the limited business down, what would you say to 35 feet? Or how would you, or would you want to have this scaled up? And if you were going to have this scaled up to to what height, just to 50 feet? Or would you go higher than 50 feet?
The limited.
No, I wouldn't go higher than you can go, Bill. No, I think I'm right, limited business is 50, business is 60, and neighborhood business is still 35. I I think you'd permit 50 at a highest point, but you wouldn't, you would, you would be encouraging a building scale that would not be a uniform rectangle of 50 in a certain spot. You'd be encouraging something that from North Ave would step up to 50 and then step down to 35 or zero as you get closer to the lake. So, yeah. Cheating or we've talked about the other parcels across from and just below Vets Field. And then on that, the that northeastern corner of the lake, on the other side of 200 Quanapawet, where that that business zone is sits. And and we and we do want to address those as well. So I'm I'm hoping there's, there's a way we can use. We can, we can, you know, include those into the the overlay as well. Because they're, they do immediately a but, and I do think they they have they do impact scenic quality. Which is, you know, really was our starting point. So I I, yeah, it's a little bit of a, I know it sounds a little bit gerrymanderish to sort of draw a circle, but then try to capture the these other zoned parcels. But we've identified that they matter and that they they do in fact influence the scenic quality of the lake. So I think that's why you've got sort of standing or a compelling reason.
All right, well, I I suppose I could argue the at the head of the lake, the business and up by the Gingerbread Construction Company there. You'd be kind of hard pressed to see where your views are of that that need to be protected. Because it's, it's kind of hard to see across the lake to those parcels. Because there's really no, you know, I suppose you'd be protecting something that was built in the Lakeside Office Park by looking that way. So I as you can tell, I'm a little, I'm still a little hesitant on on trying to attach a height to a protection of the lake without it really having some clear qualities or, you know, definabilities of why certain parcels. And when we come down, the only parcels that we can really do anything about are at the head of the lake. So that's why I'm struggling with how we're going to move forward with this.
Matt, if I could speak about it too, because I, I think we have the top of the lake at the most north part, where the business district and across low on the neighborhood business. This business district scares me more because of the height and the abilities to apply for a special permit. We have business properties here from the new apartments that went up, the new buildings, the residential, Juliana Salon, and then the car dealerships. That's all possible development land that could be up to 60 feet. I know it's a distance, but if we're looking at a zoning district, I think we should definitely consider that. Here's where I've been focusing on, and my most concern is what happens here. This is such a beautiful part of the lake. And across the tracks over here at Elm on North Ave from Church South to Yale. And maybe it's not all the way to Yale and we can name the properties here that if we did change this, and this is where I would give the case for a rezone map versus a lake district effort moving forward. And I'm still not sure. I feel equal to both of them right now. But I'm leaning a little bit more because of what could happen here that if this business gets divided at some point between Yale and Church to just neighborhood business, it cuts down the height and density right away. If we also make some changes to the table of use, we could change and allow by special permit to our planning board for different types of uses like mixed use to the 35 feet maximum height and sidewalk cafes. Which right now are just not allowed. So I do feel we have the ability to work with this area as well. So I do feel we have the ability to work with this area as well. So if there was a zoning lake district, I would really, 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 whoops, sorry that all just blinked off on me. I'm trying to zoom out to get the whole piece. There we go. If we did look at 128, the tracks and then cut in like you would walk over that footbridge. What's that? I can't remember the name of the street, Win Street, and you cross over the footbridge and then you split right down Elm, or you come right down through Elm Square. And you write down through here and you take this area and that becomes part of it. And then it is Yale Street. And then Matt, as we discussed about properties here, we're the Baptist Church and maybe it does split Town Hall and comes back up around the lake. The rest is all single-family general, so we're okay, single residents in general. But if we are going to name streets and properties, I, I think in that direction, how do we work with this area right here? And right here on north, and then right here across from Town Hall. And I think in the wording, we could get it to a place where it does work with allowing certain heights for a special permit through the planning board. And to Matt, your point about the church steeple comes to mind.
All right, well, I mean, that's that, that's, I guess, something we can move forward to. I, I, just the, you know, reading through the zoning and looking at building coverage and lot heights, those small lots down there, the, and the Prospect Street there. You'd have a hard time putting a 60-foot building on some of those parcels because they're, they are kind of small. So, you know, I, I understand what theoretically could be built there practically. I think it would be not, not much of a starter, to tell you the truth.
Not sure. I respectfully disagree because I'm looking at the apartment new buildings up here on North Ave in the top left. And then area here to be developed next to Knights of Columbus. And I don't see those being any smaller than these lots, especially if they're joined together like these lots have been. So it, it does, I look at the square footage along here and the frontage along North Emerson. And it does concern me that man, I don't know, could it go in front of the ZBA with a variance for an 85-foot tall building? There's precedence now that that has happened. So I am concerned. And I really want this to be limited to 35 feet, whether it changes to a neighborhood business or it becomes a lake district with a cap at 35 feet. And all special permits come through the planning board for the use.
All right, well, that's, that's a path forward if we want to do that.
Well, I, you can tell I feel strongly about this because I I'm still like, can't understand why Harvard Mills is the height of this, so. And I'm, I'm afraid that will also happen with some other properties in the area and this area around Vets Field is my concentration. I am concerned about the dealerships and that it is further from the lake to Theo's point. And maybe there is something in there in the wording, and I can't wait. I'm so excited to see how we'll do this wording for this. Maybe it is, once it crosses North Ave, it, it has a different step up ability in that area.
All right, so do you think we have limited, you know, have we picked the areas that are gonna be included in this yet? Or are we still working on that?
I don't know. Do we make it cut and dry and say, all those business areas in that area just go to neighborhood business areas? So what's existing obviously is existing, but anything new that goes in there will not be allowed to go above 35 feet.
I mean, that, that's a, that's a path to go. I, I so the, the next question would be if we were to change it from business to neighborhood business. There's obviously nothing in it for the current owners that have those parcels, correct?
I'm not sure. Most of the parcels down here and if I could, I could take a moment and go to street view if that helps, Matt.
Sure.
Okay, give me a second. You're better at this than I am, but I should be able to call it up pretty quick. Okay, I'll reshare. Google Map Awake Field. Change the satellite. And I was starting to do this the other night and instead I just like, got on my bike and rode over to look at it instead. Like, you know, I could just go over. So where's the, the little persons over there? And let's stand on the tracks. Okay, person, does it not have street view from there? Okay. Images, street view. Come on. Matt, what am I missing? The little person?
Yeah, you gotta drag that over and.
Well, you drag it over. Okay, I was just clicking on it. That's kind of silly. Okay. And if you missed Town Council meeting last night, again, the engineer also in DPW went through the train tracks from Broadway all the way up to North Ave and why they are the way they are. So here's one story. Laundromat, convenience. Gigliotti, Auto Body. Move down. So there's your height. There's, you're probably 32, 35 height building that fits into the neighborhood context. And I'm, I'm not saying this is the right type of building here, but that type of building height and mass-wise would be allowed. All this area from Auto Body. And I'd love to work with the property owners to see what can happen too, because they could keep the laundromat, keep the convenience, rebuild on this property with two other floors of residential and make it really nice above. That would be a special permit in the neighborhood business for us to approve, but that's how it would work. Same here. If Gigliotti was like, you know, I'm done. I want to put in a nice cafe restaurant right across from the lake in this beautiful area with a nice area across from it. With two stories of residential above, views of the lake. I mean, that is the benefit for these landowners. I, I, I don't know. I just see it as gold mine.
Well, they could do that right now if they wanted, for the most part, right?
Matt, they could go up to 60 feet right now.
Well, all right, what, what is in, what is in those 60 feet of building? Because you also need to have parking, you need to have certain setbacks. So I, I get theoretically you could go to 60 feet, but the mass of, of the parcel would not support the infrastructure of the automobiles and the loading spaces, whatever. So it, it, you know, it would, you'd be hard pressed to put a 60-foot building in there and able to have enough land to support it. That, that's my point. So, in reality, yes, that's allowed, but practically speaking, it, it's gonna be extremely tough to do. So.
I agree, and I would have thought two years ago that Harvard Mills never would have been 85 feet. I know it's a different mass building and it's in the multi-mix-use overlay district, but I still think, so we're sitting here, well, gonna get out of the street. But if we look over here, here's another opportunity. In this corner, all the way down North Ave, that could also go up to 60 feet. If this goes up to 60 feet here and that goes up to 60 feet here, definitely wintertime. I didn't do a solar study, but I'd love to do this. I just haven't had time to, to build the massing in it and put it together. But I could tell you that it's gonna block out a lot of the sun from Vets Field all the way through, especially in the wintertime when the sun is I don't know, way nicer than it is in the summertime. And there's Yale. And I'm not as concerned with which way we go with this. I just really, really feel the right route is to 35 feet maximum height for this area.
All right, so we've, we've got those parcels then. Are you thinking it would be an overlay district or would you just rezone them?
If you're asking me, Matt, I think changing the zoning map, and, and this is where I think it would be great, once we get into this with hearing from the town and talking to Tom Mullen, hearing from the townspeople, that which, and I hate to think this way, with the limited people that go to town meeting, what are our chances of having two-thirds approval for a zoning overlay district versus zoning map changes? And I can't remember who made the suggestion. I can't remember if it came from our board or from the townspeople, but keeping it focused, less complicated, less pieces, we may have a better chance at having it pass. And then there's the flip side to that. If we have it all grouped together, is it more opposition could come because it's all grouped together? So I think that as a board, once we get this article written in the next two meetings and the ad goes out and we hear from the townspeople and we get the input and we really figure it out, I think then we'll have that strategy going into town meeting. I think it will just become clearer.
So you're going back and forth between a, an overlay district or just changing those parcels, but effectively do, the, either way does affect the same parcels?
Right, and this was part of Theo's research on overlay districts and what they could become and how the planning board, and, and to the point I made earlier, when I read through the research that I did, is the planning board will become the special permit granting authority on the areas. And I think with an overlay district, we have that. I, I'm not sure, but if we just do the zoning map change and turn those business districts into neighborhood business, they would still go to the ZBA. Now, that's a bad thing, but a permit can be granted. Special permit can be granted. For that, I don't know. I, I think it's all gonna be in the wording. I don't know, Matt, in your experience on this, on our planning board with creating, I think, in, in your sitting on the board, did, did you work with two different overlay districts? The one for Franklin School and the one for the mixed use?
Well, the, basically, an overlay district would give someone an option to do something else that may give them more, more possibilities.
Right.
By doing an overlay district, which restricts their height, that doesn't give them any more possibilities. It gives them less possibilities. As an overlay district, they'll go with the underlying district, which has a, you know, more generous you know, options for whatever they might want to do. So, doing an overlay district to restrict someone, I don't, you know, I don't know if you can do that. An overlay district to give someone some options to reduce, you know, floor area ratio or something, because you're within a certain distance of, of commuter rail, then that helps promote more building, you know, more apartments, more denser, because.
That, that's really a good, yeah. The idea, if I understood what you said correctly, as I'm writing it down, promote versus restrain.
Yes.
Were the two differences. And if we're looking at the overlay to permit or promote changing the zoning would restrict and pull back. Okay.
Yeah, I, I see an overlay district for the lake saying, if you build a certain distance further from the lake and provide public access, then you might be able to go to a higher, you know, a, a higher threshold, you know, a higher building. But to say, all right, you can, you know, as long as you don't build within 100 feet of the lake, we're gonna restrict you to 35 feet. Obviously, that's not a win-win for anyone. Why would they want to do that?
True.
Yeah, I, so I, I do think I'd like to go back and do a little more research, but I, you're, you're making a very good question and I think it's not a bad idea to get, you know, some informal input from Tom Mullen and and that, that's really gonna be the the decider, right? If, if we can do it. I do think you can use these overlay districts because they're, to restrict, because they're, they're trying to protect, you know, that, that scenic quality. And so you, you wouldn't want since everyone benefits from the scenic quality of the lake, you don't want future uses that mar. And so that, that's why I, I think people have been able to use an overlay to limit a, a future use.
But Theo, if I could respond to that, we, we've already stated, and I think you did too, in the Conservation Commission Open Space Plan, the Environmental Sustainability Committee, why don't we let them take care of that? And why don't we look at a future master plan to take care of that? What if we stay focused on just what we can as a planning board, without going into master plan ideas, to really think about what can we control, what can we focus on, what could we be the granting authority on? Yeah, that's the end of my thought on that. I'm just thinking, why don't we just let the Conservation Commission and the Environmental Sustainability Committee do their thing?
So, we, yeah, the only way for them to do that would be through okay, you, you need the master plan to say, we have, we have this, this grand vision. And then you, the zoning overlay would, would help implement the goals of the master plan. Or you want the planning board to, when someone is redeveloping, to say, no, we don't like this plan because it runs afoul of we don't like this future use because it runs afoul of the, the master plan, the open space plan, et cetera. That, 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 that's, you know, just more adjudication through the special permitting process. I I think we're probably getting to the point of. We know Vision twenty thirty is underway. It's probably more strategic to think about rezoning these individual parcels. Seems like there's a compelling logic to go that route.
And and I think that, you know, I think that would be the best way, if if we want to go forward with it, is to just say. We're going to rezone these. And. And see how that goes for the most part, so.
Would that also mean that we'd be editing the the table? The table use of regulations for that rezoning option, like if we decide we're going to rezone from business to. Neighborhood business, would we then have to then? Changes that would we be putting forward, right? The vote on the change to the zoning and then the change on the. Table use of regulations to that new. To neighborhood business, for example, if we move, if we wanted to rezone from business to neighborhood business, we then want to keep neighborhood business. Mixed use, I mean, the table use of regulations as is, or do we want to make changes to the table? Use of regulations for neighborhood business, if that is the way, right, that we're, we would potentially rezone.
I I think at that point, you may want to do a new zone and call it like. Lake Business District. That way you could put in. The dimensional qualities you want for the lake, and that would be tied to obviously just these parcels that are. In a certain proximity or or within a, you know, certain view of the lake.
See, Matt, this is why we have you on the board. You think outside the box and you define a new, a new, this, the, you know. Area versus me just thinking like it has to be one that's already defined. So, thank you. Thank you for thinking outside the box and creative idea.
Well, the the problem with changing one that's already existing is you end up going afoul and. And affecting parcels that, as we know with the with the last change, parcels that are unintended, so. Let's just say, these are the parcels that are we are intending on. Adjusting the zoning to. Put those in there.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
If I could chime in on that too, Matt, I really like that Lake Business District. As soon as you said it, I I think Megan might have felt the same thing. I was just like, yes, that just like, makes so much more sense. And then I'm thinking, can we do that? Can we actually make a new zoning district?
I believe we can.
Okay.
People vote for it, yeah.
Well, the town would obviously approve it or not, but this would be a great question for Tom Mullen, like what are the implications throughout the whole zoning bylaws? Of creating a new one, and when you mention that, all I could think of is, wait, we don't have to worry about the neighborhood business at all. The Neighborhood Business District, don't quote me on that side. We do care about the neighborhood businesses, but to create a new. Lake Business District, we wouldn't have to worry about the table. We can set our own. Table and the uses all the way down the line for this new zoning, because it would have to be a new column. In the table of use, uses.
Yeah, in in that way, you could basically specifically. Target, but certain parcels where you may want to have access, correct access along the lake. Something in there that says, if you provide. So much access frontage along the lake in certain depth, then perhaps. Gain a little bit of a carrot on the other side and potentially go up a little bit higher. Towards, towards the street, so. I think that's the only, you need to make, you need to make this attractive enough. For the property owners in town that they, that people are, want to do this. Want to make it so the property owners want to do this, because they have more options. Not taking away. That you know, once you start taking things away from people, it's sort of. Rationally, and they'll do whatever they need to do to protect what they have. So. Hate for something at Lakeside to. Go rational and have a huge forty bit there, but that's. Something that could happen. That we need to keep that in.
Okay.
So I I think the next thing. Just to move this forward, if you want to look at making a new. Lakeside Business District or something like that. Rough out the parcels that we may want to have included with that. Basically, the dimensional. Table on what. Would have for. Floor ratios, frontage, stories, heights, things like that. Once we come up with that, then we can have, start having discussions with property owners and people. Start getting to the text and write it out, so. I think that might be the way to go. Let's bet this. Our meeting, while we actually write it down and then go to the town council saying this is, you want this on the. So, it's not like a pathway that people might think. Acceptable.
I feel, I feel that's a good direction. Matt, do you mind if I share the working table? That I created back a while ago? Just for a quick discussion. I want to make sure we're talking about the same information, so this is all taken verbatim from. The dimension rate, the regulations table, which is at this link. The full table, but this is thinking about the different heights, and this was a quick little building heights. Narrative to think what sixty feet versus fifty feet versus thirty-five feet to a little person. That neighborhood business versus the limited business. Versus business B, this will probably help us define. What it is, and I'm feeling like the Neighborhood Business District. Takes on a lot, the characteristics of the Lake Business District would take on a lot of the. Characteristics of the neighborhood business, and if if you don't mind, Matt, I'd like to continue my research on this. And pull a lot of the information to start with from the neighborhood business, and maybe this is. Good information to. Share with Tom Mullen to say, and this is what we're proposing to do. Does that just?
That gives us a starting point to start in conversations with people and. Just before we actually.
Right, my point being, I, the, when I see neighborhood business. I really feel that's what belongs around the lake. Neighborhood businesses, what's not allowed in the neighborhood business. District or, yeah, is sidewalk cafes. Unallowed, and a few other things that we can look at on the table. The use table.
Uh, do we need other examples to help bolster the the research?
Yes, Theo, if you want to, I mean, sorry, Matt, go ahead.
Well, that's fine, go ahead, Theo.
No, I I mean, I'll, I'll try to find some other examples that would help support. You know, the similar kinds of. Dimensional controls. Helps helps build the case for why.
Agreed. And the, the table itself. Matt, if you don't mind me sharing that original, the meeting notes that I had up, which has a link to the business, to the table. Here's the original notes that I read from and wording table one, so this. Table here, which I think I might have to reshare. This is that monster of a table that. In some ways, I wish we could just start over with and clean it all up. But as you, the the columns are all the different districts, so there's new business. And if we were to do L. Business or a Lake Business District, LB is already taken. We'd have to find a nice acronym for that. And if you scroll down, you can see what's allowed, what's not allowed, yes, no, and then SP for special permit. And there were a few items in the NB, you can see yes all the way down, and then like no. For converting a dwelling from three or four family to law at least, so this, this some in here that we should look closer at. And hospital, sanitarium, let's see, there's. Mid-rise apartment. Accessory apartment, so you could see some of the ones that are in here that are allowed, and then what are not allowed. So sidewalk cafe. Is the one that stood out to me. And we can discuss restaurant is yes, sidewalk cafe is no, like, okay. And then fast food, so if we're going down food chain, no pun intended. And that's no for fast food as well. So in in this table, we can also figure out. What we want to see, does this? Matt and the board, does this, does this make it a little too? Large and complex, where when it does go to town meeting. That will will have less a chance of it being approved?
Well, if you're going to make, if we're going to make a new district, you you need to address all of these issues, so that's, that's just part of it, so.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, is making a new district as opposed to rezoning. Making it too large for what we're trying to accomplish. I love it, but wondering, and that's if it's going to be too. Too much.
Well, I I think it's, to tell you the truth, it's easier than trying to rezone. Or change existing districts, because you don't know the ramifications of, you know. You change something at the lake because you want it to. To restrict something or encourage something there, and suddenly you have it popping up on the other side of town where you unintended. Consequences that, because you changed that whole district, so.
That's really why I do like this, okay?
Alright, so, uh, I think we have. A little bit of path for our next meeting to come up with. What we may think would be the qualities of a Lakeside Business District, and then. See how we can flesh this out, and I think we need to have some, some carrots and some sticks in there too, so. If if we're trying to do something to protect the lake. To me, the biggest thing is to try to get some, some more buffer between the actual shore. And buildings and provide some additional pedestrian access, so I think this is something we should might be able to work into it, so. It's a little bit of work here, it's it's going to take some thought process, and then a lot of input from. Businesses and townspeople, so.
Sounds like fun, yes.
Alright, so, Bill, you're going to flesh out what you have, the bones you have there now, and try to limit it. Or tailor it to a Lakeside Business District?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, what I have in my notes is Lake Business District. How to do this, show partials, dimensional, like all the different. The tables that we're just looking at to really pull from neighborhood business and to pull. And and look closely at the use table and to see what all those pieces are. And I I will, I'll probably stop at that point to bring it all together for our next meeting. And Theo mentioned he would help look at what other. Jurisdictions and or townships or whatever might have. And and the last stuff that you mentioned, Matt, the buffer from lake and the pedestrian access. Should we hold off on that? Till we define the rest of what we're trying to do, or should we also do a little research on that?
I I think we should have, I mean, we should be thinking of that, because. The Lakeside Office Park is going to be the biggest sticking point for this, because it's could potentially affect them the most.
Yep.
So if it's, if it's all restricting what they want to do there, and we want them to. Potentially donate property or access to the town. There has to be a reason why it would make it attractive for them to go this route and support this zoning article, so.
Okay.
And and I warn you, it may come down to, it could be a little bit taller there than you really want, but. You're you're getting something, potentially getting something for that. So. We got to look at that.
Agreed. Okay.
Alright, well, I think we have enough to move forward with. Bill, if you want to reach out to myself or Megan, if you've got some tasks that we can help with, then.
Okay.
And I have some, and I have availability, I'll be happy to to help you with that, so.
Thank you.
So we'll continue this with our next meeting, and and I would think at our next meeting. We'll have something a little bit more defined, and then we can start taking a little bit of input from. From people that want to speak. Uh, I don't want to get into it now, because we're still really in the early stages of development here. So until we have a more of a better outline, there's no sense. Trying to get into, you know. Addressing too many specific questions at this point. That sound acceptable?
It it does sound acceptable. I I do feel like public comment did help shape where we are. And how we've grown from the last meeting to now. So I do see the benefit of that, but I also see the benefit of that type of feedback at our next meeting. A question I do have. Is, well, should I pull this together without it being reviewed by the board? And also correspond with Tom Mullen to give him just a heads up on what we're doing. So not share this all with Tom Mullen, but. Send him an email. Reviewed by the board, I can send that out, that will give Tom Mullen a heads up of what we're trying to accomplish. And the direction we're going in, in that. We would welcome his attendance at our next planning board meeting.
Yeah, you could do that, or you could just, you know, reach out to him and say. In the grand scheme of things, if we were to to do a new district centered, you know, on issues with the lake. Do you see many potential? Stumbling blocks, issues that may be too tough to overcome any amount of time we have.
Okay.
That might be the bigger thing.
Alright.
But I wouldn't want to get to too much specifics yet, since we really haven't worked them out yet.
Right, I just, it's, thank you, and that's what I was looking for, is more of a direction, like to just give Tom a heads up on what we're. Right, I just, it's, thank you, and that's what I was looking for is more of a direction, like to just give Tom a heads up on what we're. What we're scheming, what we're planning for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, sounds good, so.
Mr. Chair, I didn't know if the other planning board members chimed in on whether you, they want to allow or not allow public comment.
Uh, at, at this meeting or next meeting or what do you?
However, we want to handle it as a board, I just thought you asked for opinions of the board, I just didn't want to take. I, I wanted to make sure that everybody was heard.
Alright, so Theo, do you think now would be a good time to? To, to comments or wait till we have something more fleshed out or, or, or what?
I, I, I think we can wait till the next meeting. The, I, I, I think people know that we, we've been listening and will certainly continue to listen and that. We'll, we'll give them some, some more things to, to work with at the next meeting, I think that's a better use of their time as well.
Yeah, because at this point, we, we really have no text to really pick apart yet, so I'd rather wait till we have something and then people can. Can help us develop it or point out the error of our ways, so. Megan, how do you feel about, about this?
No, I agree, I think people, um, are better when they can, you know, react and respond to something, so I think next meeting would be perfect to get, um, public comment.
Okay. Alright, so we'll plan on doing that, so. Alright, we're gonna move on to item number five. Items not anticipated by the chair. So. This is, uh, when I was planning on talking to Aaron, I, I, you said you were gonna have a meeting with, um, if you're still here, Aaron. With the town about getting back to actual in-person meetings.
Um, so yes, I'm still here, sorry, um, so, uh, the governor just announced today that he's giving till the end of November to figure everything out. I'm talking with Steve tomorrow and the way we kind of are gonna handle that after June 15th, um, so. That's what I have.
Okay, just, just in case he's wondering how people want to go. I would love to continue to have these meetings recorded. It's, I'd love that people can look at this stuff, you know, not quite right away, but. Not too shortly after the fact and see what we've been doing. It would be nice if we could have some video conferencing with people, but. Uh, like I was talking to you, the logistics of being in that room and having. Uh, video feed and having computers there, it still, that needs to be worked out.
Yeah, I think that's why the governor, uh, extended the deadline, I think the town feels the same way, um, and how we run meetings. Um, because a lot of people can't get to all the meetings, but they still like to listen in, so. Yeah, I hope that we can continue kind of a hybrid model moving forward.
Alright, good. Um, Jonathan, I, I see you on there, is that, since you. You, you were part of the discussion, is there anything else to add to this?
No, I think that's right, we, um, we did start talking about this, uh, at last night's town council meeting. Uh, really before knowing about the extension in through November, uh, in terms of allowing, uh, remote meetings, so we, we adopted a policy that would have covered. Uh, our boards basically as of June 15th, but there was a, a lot of recognition that we need to spend a lot of time thinking about. The public participation piece and recording and so forth and, you know, what kind of technology we have available, uh, and how that translates into policy too, so. Uh, I'm really glad to see that we've got a little more time to do that, otherwise it was gonna be a lot of work over the next two weeks.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting, we have all these. All these things we need to do, yet we tend to wait until the last minute to try to figure out how to do it, so, but, um. Well, uh, this, I, I think this is a good, uh. Not that things in the pandemic have been good, but this is one good thing to come out of this, is that it's gonna be more access for people that, uh. They don't need to physically be there.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and I'll keep you up to date, Matt.
Alright, sounds good. Um, and then the only other issue I have to talk about is. As we all heard, the. Before you be this proposed on, uh, North Ave. It was really disappointing that, um, this is gonna happen. Uh, especially considering that. The planning board worked so hard to get something in there that, yes, it wasn't the best. But we also knew it, it wasn't the worst thing that could happen there and now unfortunately the. What we had thought was the worst thing that could happen is gonna happen there, so it, it's unfortunate that, um. There were a lot of people that really were. Hell bent on stopping development in town. But unfortunately, um. Showed their, I guess, anger in, in the wrong, wrong way and unfortunately, we're gonna get. Stuck with something that we not, don't necessarily want, so, um, I just wanted to say that, uh. I, I thought we did a good job on that. Anyone that paid attention knows that I was a complete skeptic from the, from the start, I was not for it at all and I was convinced as we. Discussed it and went through the options and saw that, you know, not that it was ever said that if you don't do this. Um, you'll get this, we kind of knew it all along. Which is also why I'm hesitant on jumping too quickly at zoning changes because what happens is it, it, it forces people. To protect what they have and, and make some irrational decisions and, uh, sometimes you, you don't get the best. Product when you jump and try to get something completed to, to get under a deadline, so. That's all I have about that, I don't know if anyone else has anything they want to, uh. Talk about.
I do, Matt, um, it's, as the board knows, it's been bothering me, um, a lot and I think I bring it up at every meeting about foundry. And I, I just want to, I'm wondering if it's. Something our board should do, meaning writing a letter to, um, inspectional services at town hall. And to the Board of Appeals and to town administration, um, asking. Why the zoning board of appeals had the special permit granting power for. A mixed-use district. Property where it states clearly that the planning board has the special permit granting power for, or authority for that. District, that overlay district. I've gone through the January 2019 decision by the Board of Appeals, I've gone through each different waiver that they asked for. And I still have no clue how that got approved. For the height that it is in the neighborhood that it is in, and I'm looking. To, you know, Matt, as the chair, do we, um, is this something, is this a battle we should fight, is this something we should go on the? Um, record for, um, showing. Our, like, I, I'm still just unfounded and I know and, um, trying to hold back with certain words, but I, I really. It, what, if it was done legally in a certain way, that was just a multifamily building in an industrial district, that's fine, but it's in a mixed-use overlay district. Which brings the granting authority to us, it doesn't mean variances go to us, but just the special permit part. I know our board is not as capable as the ZBA. To look at variances, to look at all the stuff that they do, we're not equipped for that, but we are equipped for the special permit in the mixed use and I, I really. I don't understand, so I, I don't know, is this something that it's worth our board digging into? Writing letters, writing a letter?
Um, I, I still think with the. The change and, and I, I can't remember when we did it, but we basically had a zoning change that, that took. These decisions away from the planning board and, and. Gave them to the ZBA and the reason was. To make things a little easier for the, for the process, they only had to go to one board and not go through both boards, so.
Right.
I'm pretty sure that that's why the ZBA is doing this, so you may want to check with Tom Mullen and see if he recalls that. But I, I don't know if sending a letter to the ZBA is really gonna shed much light on it.
Right, so. And I, and I don't want it to become. A sticking point, but I, I do, and I understand what you're talking about because I have talked to, um, former council and former planning board chair, Paul Donaco. As well as, and this is in the past, as well as a few other people in town that have held positions. Um, and to our former town planner. Understanding that, you know, our planning board is to plan, we need to get our hands on a master plan and really work through it. We need to look at open space development, we need to work with other committees and bring them together, make sure public hearings are open, so I understand all that. But it's specifically written into this mixed-use, um, overlay district that the planning board has special permit authority. And on, in January of 2019, that never came to us and I know at the time we were three-person board and barely hanging on and trying to figure this all out. But that just doesn't seem right. And I don't want it to happen again, so what type of action as a board can we do? And if, if the action is for me to have this conversation with Tom Mullen to find out and if he just says, no, they have the power to do it and you didn't, and maybe that's the end of it. Maybe that's what personally I need, but I would like our board not to be overlooked for. Um, responsibilities that we have.
Yeah, I think maybe consulting with, with Tom Mullen might be the, the first good step and then, uh. Go from there, I'll have to go back and, and dig through my records and see what I can recall from that, but. I, I know it happened when, uh. Paul Revis was here and we had a lot of discussions over it, we actually voted to send it to town meeting. And, and it passed there, so it could be that there's some leftover fragments in the zoning code, which happens all the time where. A prior code, you know, grants some of the authority and there was some text that wasn't removed, that could be what you're seeing. But, uh, I seem to recall that, um. It was voted on a town meeting to do this. To give the ZBA the authority for these.
Do you mind if I share my screen quickly, just so we're talking about the same thing and I'm not. Going off in a place where I shouldn't be?
Oh, go ahead.
Alright, thank you. Hmm. Which screen is that, okay? Not that one. Town of Wakefield, okay. I have been asking for feedback and input from different people in the town, so. I think I have it, here we go. This is the mixed-use development. Zoning bylaw that was written in and approved by. The town. And procedures, so applicability and intent, and I'm not gonna read all through this. But this procedure is the special permit granting authority for mixed-use development under these provisions shall be the planning board. Regardless of dwelling type or height, provisions of section 190-32A, notwithstanding in order to grant a special permit. For a mixed-use, the planning board must find that the developer has met all the general requirements for a special permit. I just. That's pretty much it, and the last sentence there, the planning board shall adopt and revise from time to time the rules, regulations relative to the size, form, number in contents. So it just, it's, I read through this like so many times. I just. Yeah, I. I don't know.
Well, I. I kind of wish we still had all written that in a book that was published every year, so therefore you keep track of changes, but. I would not be surprised that, that the E-code was never updated too. That would not.
So you're saying that might not be current or, I don't know.
Correct, but the, the issue is right now is. Where is the actual correct version of anything? And that's one of the problems we have right now, even, even our rules and regulations for, um. For subdivisions is, is out of order from.
Yeah.
What we last had in the book until what's on E-code, so. That, that was a known issue that Paul was, was dealing with before he left and it's, it's still out there. He sent me a lot of those documents, I need to pull through those at some point and, and find out, but. The problem is, there is no master template to go back and say, this is the way it is. Unfortunately anymore, it's, it's, it's fragmented, it gets thrown up, you don't know. Uh, I don't even know what the process is for, you know, the official process for, I know Erin was saying that she could send things to E-code and it would, would. Be updated. But is that coming out of the town, you know, a drawer at the town clerk's office where the official one is, that, that's what I don't know.
Okay.
Think that needs to be looked into and I don't know who the hell would be the person to look into that, so. We've kind of gotten to a fragmented society here with, uh, all the stuff we have, so. Writing it down in a book was always a good thing, I know every time we do a subdivision, we go down to the town hall and buy the book and file it away, so we knew exactly what we were dealing with. We literally have projects where the, the code changes while we're doing projects and we have to. We have to change what we're doing to, to go with the code, so.
Alright, so what I'll do is I'll contact Tom Mullen and ask specifically about this, okay, thanks.
Yeah, Aaron, and I, I don't want to put you on the spot, because.
I mean, I think we're doing the best we can, yeah, I mean, with technology, things change, yeah, um, you're not putting me on the spot, but.
Yeah, so I, I don't, it may be that Tom Mullen or, or Steve Mayo has a master document where it's actually, I, I would. Be willing to bet that Tom probably has filed everything away and it just, you know, he may have the, a, a master copy of it, so, I don't know. I think we need to go back to that and, and figure out if what's uploaded on E-code is correct. Before we go too far.
Okay.
Does that sound like a clear path, Bill, or before we?
Yes, and my. Contacting Tom Mullen about foundry, um, and more about the mixed-use overlay district. I'll also ask him about, um, E-code, master copy of our zoning bylaws and. Maybe about just a process or procedure of how they're actually updated, um.
So can I just chime in?
Please.
So Paul, I think pretty much ever, after every town meeting would submit any sort of bylaw change, zoning change, from what I can see in my records, um. So I think everything is pretty much up to date unless someone feels differently, um, but from what I saw on my records, he's done a really good job, so. Just wanted to put that out there.
Thanks.
Well then, if that is in fact the correct, then yeah, there could be an issue here of why. Things have not been coming to the, to the board, but I, I think we should investigate that first before we. Go too far on.
Yeah, and I'm fine looking into that as well.
Okay. Okay. Alright, um, does anyone else have any, I know, Theo, you had a couple, um. Couple items that at some point you wanted to discuss, so.
Yeah, and thi- this is really, I I think, building um sort of uh future items for us to consider. Um, you know, uh, down the line as uh. Uh, related to the the rest of the year, and I I think they're, they're sort of positive things in response to a lot of the things we've we've talked about. Um, it'd be really nice to, um, once Vision twenty thirty is concluded, to invite them to uh. Give a summary, um, and I I think that's sort of what set the stage for uh. Future considerations of of where where the planning board would help take uh Vision twenty thirty into a new master plan, so that that's just. Something to uh plan ahead for. Um, we've, uh, we've also talked about finding ways of inviting. Other boards or other committees to sort of give input, like that's just another information gathering uh opportunity, so. Um, I think it would be a good idea at future points to invite sustainability, invite the Con Commission, invite. Uh, ZBA, um, and just, uh, you know, we can plan ahead for when, when that makes sense. And when, you know, um, there might, might be opportunity to do it. I think that, um, you know, um. So that's just thi- things to look ahead to, and even, um, you know, uh. Uh, when you're really getting digging into, I think a lot of the uh, the specifications about special permitting. Um, like that's, there's a nice opportunity to have that discussion, because then you really are getting that. Out in the public, and then that also influences and I I think informs any future bylaws, revisions, or things like that. It's uh. Um, I I think just, just a good communication and feedback loop, so I I throw that out there, um. Uh, being, being a planner and a uh housing, housing guy, um, and knowing that forty B is um. Uh, a hot topic, um, I, I like the idea of a a future conversation about why. Uh, we, you know, we're looking forward to having a more diverse housing stock, by both by. By type and price points, um, and was sort of what are the positives for the town, because I think that that's an important uh. Sort of discussion topic and learning topic for us as well, so I I would, I would, I would put those out there, um, so. Um, I have a particular question too around um. Uh, potential recusals, um, when we're getting approval not required kinds of things, I don't know, um, uh, you can, you can give me some. Input sort of out outside of the meeting, um, that that would help me. I don't know if there's. Then, you know, there needs to be formal recusals or or things like that.
Well, yeah, there, there's only. For the most part, um. There's only a few things that. We have jurisdiction over with, um, in our plans is, you know, they meet the access issues. Uh, frontage, um, and, and uh. I think it's with a lot, I can't remember offhand, but they also need to uh comply with our, our rules and regs, so. Um, one of the things we can do is um before plans actually accepted to. Be come, come before the board to uh see if it complies with the statutory requirements is. If it doesn't comply with our rules and regs, we can send it back and say you need to have this comply. Before we reject it, so. And, and then when it, you know, if it should get rejected, we have to be explicit on the reasons why. We're not acting on it, and that needs to be documented with the town clerk in writing. Right away, because that's a legal process that starts there, yeah, so. For the most part, we kind of review these plans. To make sure that uh they comply with our rules and regs, and then before they even come before us, so. So I I hope that answers some of your questions, but uh.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, it's a little bit more specifics about like my, my affiliation to the, the parties that are. Requesting them, and then, you know, um, when or where or when I should recuse or not, so that's just a, and.
Well, well, for the most part, all the decisions we're making are, it's, it's cut and dry, it's.
Yes, yeah.
Have access, you don't, if you have right, right frontage, or you don't. So it's, it's really not much where your opinion can get involved, so for the most part. You really shouldn't need to recruit, recuse yourself too much on these, I would think.
Sure.
Um, I I, you know, if I did a plan that needed to be endorsed by the planning board, obviously I would recuse at that point, because I was. I I worked on the plan itself, but say your, your neighbor or somebody you work with, put a plan forward. That I don't think would be the the reason to recuse yourself.
Alright, that's very helpful, thank you.
Alright, uh, Megan, did you have anything you wanted to discuss, or?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Alright, so uh, I think the last item on the agenda is uh. On five adjournment, do I hear a motion to adjourn meeting?
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will second.
Alright, the motion made by Megan, uh, seconded by Theo, uh, roll call votes, uh, Bill.
Yes.
Theo.
Yes.
Uh, Megan?
Yes.
And I vote yes to adjourn the meeting, so um. Thank you, thank you, Aaron, for tuning in. Thank Jonathan, and uh, thanks for the people who are. Watching us uh make the sausage here, we appreciate it, so uh, we will see you hopefully at our next meeting. Alright, thank you, good night.
Thanks, man, have a great night.
Thank you, Matt, everybody.